Good morning. It's 8:30 and I'm calling the March 26th, I'm sorry, March 26th, meeting the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order. First, order of business is approval of the agenda.
Move approval.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Next, we have Citizens to Be Heard. Are there any citizens that wish to speak on a topic that's not on our agenda? Steve, do we have anybody on line?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
All right. Next, approval of payment bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
Here a second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Item two. Request to approve the rehire and open, to rehire an open juvenile worker position in the nonsecure unit. We have Josh Swanson with us. Morning, Josh.
Yeah, here we had a recent resignation in the nonsecure program. Oh, it's on, sorry.
Go, if you just re-.
Yeah, we had a recent resignation in the nonsecure program. It's a full-time juvenile detention worker position, budgeted position. I'm seeking approval to rehire that position.
Any questions for Josh? Do we have a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Next, we have request approval to advertise for social services supervisor position.
Mr. Chair, I think we have one item before that.
Yep, one item before that. Request approval for the hiring of Clay County Social Services Director.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. As you are aware, this past, this past Friday, interviews were conducted for the open social service director position brought about with Ms. Rhonda Porter's resignation, or retirement coming this, at the end of June. This, this board and committee mem, hiring committee members interviewed a number of qualified candidates. And after, after those interview process and the discussion, one of those applicants came forward as a, the strongest candidate out of a really, really strong group of individuals. And so, this morning, we have before you Quinn Jaeger. As, as the request to hire, we would be looking to hire Mr. Jaeger at step 28, grade number one, with an adjustment after six months, and then again after a year. And with that, I'd yield for any questions, comments from this board.
Any questions? Just a comment, Quinn, you did quite well, and everybody on the board is behind you and supportive. You've got big shoes to fill, but I think you, you're, you've demonstrated that you're up to the task. So, this is, this is good. If I get, entertain a motion if we don't have.
I'm making a motion to approve the hiring.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just, excuse me, comment. Rhonda has done a fantastic job with this department, and it is very evident by the leadership that she's cultivated within, and we're really excited about the team that you're part of, that you will become the leader of, and are excited for the collaborations that are to come. One of the things that you said during your interview, when we're talking about the programs in which social services offered to the community, you really talked about the sacrifice of the, the community pays in terms of the tax and its community, public dollars. And so, that's something that we are all painfully aware of. It's always a delicate balance, and I really appreciate that you have an awareness of that, and we're really excited about you taking over. I think this would result in a backfill as well, so I would wonder if the motion could reflect that as well.
I think that's the next item on the.
Okay. Gotcha.
Any further discussion, comments?
Mr. Chair, I want to echo your comments, too, in regards to the pool of applicants that we had, and, and it was, it wasn't an easy choice, because there was, you know, and as what Commissioner Mojo mentioned about what Rhonda has built in terms of potential succession and leadership planning has proven to, to be very good. And, and interestingly enough, you know, all four candidates were asked, well, what if you don't get the position? How are you gonna? And I, and you all answered it very well, and, and all said that they would fully be behind the new person. So, going in here, those other strong candidates, I think now they've, they said they were gonna have your back, too. So, so I, I think that was really important to hear from, from all of, all who said that. So, anyway, it is, congratulations.
Thank you so very much. Looking forward to it, and I hope to not let any of you down.
We'll make it official here if there's no other comments. All right, we have motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Congratulations, Quinn.
Congratulations.
Request approval to advertise for social service supervisor position.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With the board's actions, that does leave a open, open supervisor position within the social service director, excuse me, with the social service director hiring. And so, we would be requesting that Quinn's position be advertised for fill with, with backfill. Our, our goal, kind of combining the last two items, our goal from a timeline perspective, would, would, would allow for Quinn to kind of get his, his part of the department in order, hopefully look at participating in the hiring of the new supervisor, and starting the new role with overlap with Rhonda, starting, starting around May 6th. That, I yield for any questions.
Any questions? Entertain a motion?
Move to approve the hire.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, on to item five. Request approval to replace county agency social work position in disability services due to resignation.
Hey, good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Feels too real now. Yeah, take it back. Oh, we'll be in good hands. Okay, I'm here this morning to request replacement of a social work position in our disability division. We had a resignation, and this individual is moving out of the area, so is looking for something a little bit closer to home. This is one of those positions, it's in Holly Warner's unit, and the position does provide waiver case management, and they do generate quite a bit of revenue to support the position. So, we are requesting the position to be filled with the motion to include any backfill, should we have internal interest.
Any questions for Rhonda?
Move to approve with backfill.
Yeah, I'll second with backfill.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Congratulations, Rhonda, you've.
Thank you. How many more of these am I gonna get? I don't know.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna miss you when you're not here, but.
Thank you.
Everybody's commented, and it is worth noting, you've done a wonderful job of succession planning and building leadership up, and you've got Quinn set up to win, because he's got a team behind him, and they, they work together well, and that speaks highly of your leadership and your foresight in how that department's been run. And we are, we are grateful, and the taxpayers of Clay County are grateful.
Thank you.
You've done a great job.
I appreciate that.
You've got a couple more months, so.
Yep.
We're not gonna let you rest.
Thanks.
Thanks, Rhonda. Okay, we're ahead, and we have got a.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if Justin, a lot of times, is here, but, but Brian does have an item on number 13. If, if the board's wishes were for him to handle that now, he's willing to do that.
Let's proceed with that. Request approval to fill Assistant County Attorney position vacancy.
Morning, Mr. Chair.
Morning.
Board members, so, as the board may recall, when I did my presentation before, we do have currently two openings. One of those openings has been for a period of over eight months, it opened back in August. But I do have an attorney who previously worked in my office, who has expressed interest in coming back to work in the office in the same capacity that she had worked previously, which I think is actually a good benefit for the county. I think she recognizes what she wants to do in regard to public service and environment that we have, and does want to come back to that. The request is to come back, grade 23 is the grade that the Assistant County Attorneys are on, she's requesting to come back where she was previously. So, my request is that if she would have been working for us this amount of time, she would have been at a grade eight with, moving to grade nine by September. So, my request is that she would come in at an eight, move to a grade nine, or excuse me, step nine, within six months. That would put her right back approximately right where she would have been previously, and nothing lost, nothing gained, I guess, if you will. She'll be able to step back in, have all the confidence that she'll, again, fit in well, work well with the team, be able to do the work that she's done previously, and we'll have that position then filled, and have a, a full criminal team, we'll still have one civil, civil opening still working, but that would be my request.
And just to point out, this has been before pick and was sent forward with a recommendation from the pick committee.
And if I could add, I guess I didn't write it in there, but I did ask the pick, and she had asked for that. She does have some vacation already planned, some specific things, tickets bought, which I had said we would not cause her to lose, so I'd asked for a front load of 40 hours of sick and a front load of 40 hours of vacation, not new, or not in addition to what she would earn, but just that it would be front loaded, and she would have that available to be able to use if needed, which I think the pick also had approved.
Any questions, discussion? Kevin?
No. I. Oh. Oh, yeah, as Dave said, we discussed this at pick, and we, we decided that in order to get her on and stuff like that, that we would do that, to save some training and all that, so I'd make a motion to approve the request.
Yeah, motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Just to clarify that that does include the front loading as.
Okay, no further discussion. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you all, much appreciated.
Mr. Chair, I believe Justin can't take, he can't take his nine, his 915, but could take some of the other items.
Justin, you want to proceed to request approval for pavement testing?
Yes, so, the first item I have is approval of the proposal from Braun Intertech for pavement testing. So, this is the annual pavement testing that we do that is budgeted. So, I am seeking approval of a proposal from Braun Intertech to provide pavement testing on CASA 9, CASA 21, and CASA 34.
Questions for Justin?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Have motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes. Let's see, soil boring, request approval.
Yes, so this is a same, same thing, it's just a different road, and it is soil borings from Braun Intertech. So, last year, we did pavement testing on CASA 11 from Trunk Highway 336 to Saban. Now, this is just kind of the next step in preparing for a future design of this roadway and getting soil borings to know what our best plan of attack would be on this road.
Questions?
Not a question, just, I really appreciate this. This is one of those roads that, growing up, if you ever were driving with a trailer, you just made sure not to look behind, because there are no shoulders on it. All can probably attest to that, it's, it's dangerous, and we've gotten by with it as it is, so I, I'm hopeful that, that we can get some promising results and then move towards a redesign.
That will be welcome.
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Knock another one down. And next, we have request approval for Resolution 2024-11 for Department of Natural Resource Funding.
Yes, so this is the annual resolution for the DNR funding for the Agassi Recreational Trail. So, it runs from Eulyn, five miles north to the North County line. What this resolution does is it just allows us to get reimbursed for any maintenance or mowing that we do on the trail.
I'm making a motion to approve, unless there's any discussion.
I'll second the motion. It's a good thing.
Okay, have motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes.
Thank you.
And we'll see you, see you after the bids. All right.
Mr. Chair, I could take number 14 if the, the board wishes.
Okay. Proceed to request approval of Resolution 2024-12, supportive legislative appropriation of $52.42 million to complete the Minnesota financial commitment for the diversion, construction improvement, land acquisition necessary for the Fargo-Moorhead area diversion project.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. As you recall, last, last Tuesday during committee assignments, we had quite a lengthy discussion in regards to the, receiving the full ask, or asking for the full ask of $52.42 million to complete our financial commitment on the Minnesota side. The board asked that county personnel, one, provide both a letter to our, our area legislators in reaffirming our support for the full, full ask, and also asked to provide a, a resolution of, a reaffirmation of the importance of, of that ask. And so, this morning before you, as was mentioned, is Resolution 2024-12. And with that, I would yield for any questions.
Yes, Steve, this will be sent to our legislators and to the, our partners at City Moorhead.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, we certainly can do that if that, that's the board's wishes.
Any comments or questions?
I do think, as you suggested, sending that on is important, and certainly I strongly support this. We've been, we've had a commitment agreed to from the state, and we just do make sure it's sent out, and they understand clearly the position and, and advocate for it all of us.
Yeah, I, the, the understanding, way before I got here, Kevin can probably speak to it, but there's an understanding that we would approach this together as partners in the state of Minnesota, and to address the needs of the entire community on this side of the river. And I think it's, it's, it's a prudent reminder that we need to approach this as a team, and not individually trying to fund our, our individual entities. Jenny, yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I serve on the Public Policy Committee for the chamber, and there was a lengthy, lengthy discussion regarding what Minnesota's efforts at the Capitol was this year in regards to the funding, and, and it was commented, Mayor Dartis specifically said he really appreciated to hear that, that they're continuing, that we're continuing to go for the, the whole amount, and because, as has been stated several times, that is something that's been budgeted to come in, and, and if that total amount from Minnesota doesn't come, that will really create a financial hurdle in regards to planning for the diversion. So, as members of the Finance Committee of the Diversion Authority, but also members of the diversion, I think it's important to share with them the resolution in which we're supporting, and just keep them abreast of our continued dialogue in St. Paul to secure the dollars needed for Minnesota mitigation.
Yeah, I, Steve, I'm wondering if we could still even it, we spent quite a bit of time designing that little brochure thing that, that kind of, I wonder if we could just still attach that again, along with this resolution, that it gives a little bit further breakdown, you know, but I, I think that would be worthwhile to include that as an attachment to the resolution.
Any other discussion?
Allow for a motion to approve Resolution 2024-12.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Resolution, motion for the resolution passes.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, as part of your other, other requests from that day, I did also reach out to, to City Administrator Dan Molly, or City Manager Dan Molly, in requesting that the, the City of Moorhead take action on this. He did share with me recently that they are bringing this to their, their policy committee with the intent of bringing it to their full council at a later date.
Okay, thank you on that.
Thank you.
We are a little ahead of time. Why don't we take a, a eight-minute, well, let's make it a five-minute break, and then we'll come back, and I'll entertain a motion to go into a public hearing. Back in session at nine o'clock. At nine o'clock, we have a public hearing scheduled to consider the Marilyn J. Fuchs RLT petition for rezoning. Do I have a motion to go into public hearing?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, we are in public hearing now on this issue, and, on my paperwork here. Matt Jacobsen, our director, is gonna address this issue. Matt, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, yes, this is petition for rezoning. The applicant is essentially petitioning to rezone 160-acre parcel to allow for the reopening and expansion of an existing gravel mine. The current zoning is agricultural general. There's two overlay districts on it, resource protection aggregate and resource protection biological. The proposed use is permitted under the current zoning with the completion of an environmental assessment worksheet. The proposed zoning would remove that resource protection biological overlay, and then that proposed use would be permitted as an interim use. Here's the zoning. Much of the parcel, it does have that resource protection biological, except for the northeast corner. So, this is the southwest quarter of Section 8 in Skree Township. Current use is agricultural. There is, as you can see, a history of gravel mining on the property since at least the early 80s, late 70s. It occurred in the northwest and southeast extents of the property, so up in here, and then down in the southeast here. The property has been grazed before, and much of it is now cropland. So, it has a, the gravel mining, grazing history, it's converted to cropland in around 2013. I think the reason for it being zoned resource protection biological was at one time there was a greater prairie chicken booming ground, and it is designated as disturbed land in the Minnesota Biological Survey. So, once, at one point, had some ecological value, and then, and likely due to the, the presence of the prairie chickens. And so, this is at 1991. You can kind of see where the gravel mining, this is an old mine here, looks like there's potentially some down here as well. This was kind of the largest extent of the, the mining on the property. And then, this is 2014. You can see where a lot of it's been cultivated or converted to ag land. And then, this is from August of 2023. With our zoning, and this is pretty common in other counties in Minnesota, is we have base zoning and we have overlay zoning. So, it can get a little complicated. So, a parcel like this is actually within three zoning districts. One is that base agricultural general zoning district, and then the resource protection aggregate and the resource protection biological. They kind of just kind of layer on top of each other. Whichever one's the most restrictive is the one that basically applies to whatever specific standard or use you're, you're attempting to do. And in that, as I had mentioned before, in the resource protection biological district, an EAW would be required. So, the Planning Commission did look at our Conference of Plan Goals and Objectives related to this request. Fostering a balanced, in our natural resources and environment aggregate resources category, one of the goals is to foster a balanced approach to aggregate resource extraction that is compatible with the natural resources and rural character of Clay County. Objective under that would be to avoid or mitigate against impacts to groundwater, surface water, native prairie, woodlands, wetlands for newer expanding mining operations. And so, you can see, this is based on the County Biological Survey that was done in, gosh, probably the mid 90s, and our resource protection biological zoning district is based on that. They do include disturbed land in there, so that's land that, again, was highly, had some ecological value at one point, no longer does. Maybe there's some potential to do restoration on, on disturbed land. There is some very significant land up to the northwest. This is actually, I think, where most of the prairie chicken activity is currently occurring. They do like disturbed land for booming grounds because of the short grass and things like that, better dancing floor, so to speak. So, with this request, removing that resource protection biological zoning overlay district would allow for the gravel mine to be permitted without an EAW, and that could be considered appropriate, just given that the parcel does have a history of mining on it, and also grazing, and then cultivation as well. And greater prairie chicken activity on this particular parcel has, now, there's been no data that it's been observed in over 20 years. So, mainly to the north and the west, and I think the basis for that was that there were prairie chickens present, or population of prairie chickens present for this zoning.
Can you just briefly describe what restoration would be expected on completion of the mining?
So, that would be a likely condition of the interim use permit, and it typically would be the landowner's specification. I know that the, the, the landowner did go through the FSA and RCS, and did a whole study on highly erodible cropland, or highly erodible land, and then wetlands as well on this parcel, in order to do cultivated crop, crops on this, to farm it essentially. So, it would likely just go back in, it would go into farmland. The Planning Commission made these following findings, they're included in your packet in, in making their recommendation, and I can just go to the recommendation and come back. So, their recommendation was to approve the rezoning of the southwest quarter of Section 8 Township 138, North Range 45 West, Skree Township from agricultural general, resource protection aggregate overlay, resource protection biological overlay, to agricultural general resource protection aggregate overlay. And so, I can run through these findings really quick if you'd like me to, or if it would be beneficial, or, or else you all have them, too, so.
I don't need to go through them.
With that, I'll yield for any questions.
Just a comment, I mean, it seems very practical to me, and knowing the time on the last of the, the prairie chickens, I'm assuming that you read comments for. I'm assuming that you hear comments from DNR or anybody?
I did not. I should mention to Mr. Chair that the applicant is here as well.
Would anybody like to speak on this issue? Any other discussion, questions?
Move to close the hearing.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, we're at public hearing. Do you have a motion or any questions?
So Matt, just to, going back, so when, when we, when there's a, a new gravel pit established or, you know, an expansion of a gravel pit, isn't there, isn't there something in place that goes to kind of what Commissioner Everidge talked about in terms of restoration? Is, is there a restoration plan that's part of that process? When, I mean, I mean, you can only mine so much and then it's, then it's.
Yes, absolutely. So one of the, one of the, a couple of things with that is the planning commission will put a condition on their permit for reclamation. And then a, a reclamation bond would be required as well, and it's usually factored in as how much it would cost to restore an acre, a per acre type thing, so.
So, so for us to rezone it, then the planning commission still has to go through that process, is that correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that.
Yep, and they would be doing that at their April 16th meeting.
Okay, very good.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion if I may. Motion to rezon, Section 8 Township 138 North.
One, sorry about that. All right, motion to rezone southwest quarter, Section 8 Township 138 North Range 45 West of agricultural general resource protection, aggregate overlay, resource protection biological overlay and general, excuse me, overlay and turn it to a ag general resource protection aggregate overlay based on the planning commission recommendations to approve, which was unanimous. Other things I'll just add to the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Jenny. And I just want to make a comment that, you know, it's practical. I think it also brings highest and best use to the land and we're always looking for that, so that's the reason for my motion.
Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you. Just one of the, one of the other things that we, and I, it's, it's addressed in the findings, but typically on these things, one of the biggest concerns is the traffic and, and how it impacts the roads. Just want to address that a little bit. We don't need to go through all the findings, but one of the findings is that about the.
Yep, absolutely. And Mr. Chair and Commissioner Campbell, the, with, with the traffic, I'll go to that, something in that finding here. There is an existing gravel mine in that area that is closing up. And so with that one closing up, the traffic shouldn't be increased in that area at, at all. The, the planning commission will also consider traffic as, as part of their, the permitting process as well. And I have had some discussions with the applicant about, about the use of roads in that area and the, in the haul route and, and in his application that we've had some pre-discussions on that. He's looked at using a haul route that's already been used by an existing operator and then one that would impact the least amount of residents. And he's also had some input from the township on that as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Mojo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One thing we've, to Commissioner Campbell's question, and one thing we've ensured that we have a close working relationship, not only with attorney, attorney's office at our hearings, but also our county engineer has attended all of the meetings to provide input on the highway department's perspective and how haul routes and, and traffic council will be affecting the, the areas as well.
Anything else? All right, we have a motion in a second to rezone this section as described by, in the, in the information sheet. So all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion passes?
Thank you.
Justin, are we ready?
We are.
All right. Justin Sorum, county engineer, back on approval, low bid contention on approval state aid of Cassaw 10, Cassaw 37, Cassaw 15 bridge replacements.
Yes, so we did, we did receive eight bids and each bid that I read does have a bid bond in the amount of 5% and there was no addendums on this project or on this bid. So the first bid we received was from Tonheim Construction LLC. Their bid is $1,250,302.79. The second bid we received was from Celine Brothers Incorporated. Their bid was $1,198,766.0. Third bid we received was from Dennis Drews Incorporated. Their bid was $1,143,535.0. The fourth bid we received was from Gladen Construction Incorporated. Their bid was $1,099,59.45. Fifth bid we received was from Midwest Contracting LLC. Their bid was $1,079,369.0. Next bid was from Central Specialties Incorporated. Their bid was $1,021,450. Next bid we received was from John Riley Construction Incorporated. Their bid was $989,427.50. And the final bid we received was from Hual Excavating LLC. Their bid was $936,261.0.
Who's that bid from?
Hual Excavating.
Cool, thank you.
So obviously, I think we received really, really good bids today. I would like to approve this contingent upon approval from state aid since there is bond funds on this. There's a couple new requirements that came out with the most recent bonding bill, including an equal pay and workforce certificate. So as long as they are able to provide those, I'd like to award the bid.
Questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I would move the engineer's request to approve based on.
Approval from state aid.
From state aid.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second, we have any further discussion? Commissioner Mojo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Want to send appreciation to the companies for sending bids. It's always great to see a healthy amount of bids submitted from so many different companies. So appreciate getting started on this, next year's work, work slot and hopefully bids will continue to come in favorably.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign?
Thank you.
Have we, have we worked with Hual Construction before?
Yes, they did four box culverts for us last year.
Okay, very good.
They did really good work, so. Really small operation, but they do a good job.
Rhonda and crew.
We're pretty far ahead.
Yeah, so why don't we?
Mr. Chair, I can take a stab at my committee reports if that's helpful.
Okay, that would help.
Thank you. Last week on March 20th, I attended the MetroCog emergency meeting with North Dakota DOT. I've reported this board several times. The, the main topic was to address the D obligation of 2023 carryover funds in the amount of 812,274. We did, we were joined by North Dakota DOT Director Ron Henke, Deputy Director for Planning, Chad Orne, as well as representatives from all of the communities. It was a really good dialogue in terms of how now that the MetroCog is an MP or a TMA instead of an, what we were classified at, it's, it's the first time in North Dakota that there's that type of classification. And so there are some gaps in policies and communication and, and I think we were able to shore up all of those. Happy to report, North Dakota DOT will be re-obligating those funds. We really did stress the importance of, of how we as a metro group work. The river obviously divides us, but we really work in collaboration in terms of planning. Those specific projects that were defunded really had a lot of consequences in return in regards to MinDOT and the INID4 project and Dilworth and the railroad study. That was $250,000 and I re-stressed to North Dakota DOT that the only one probably harder to work with in any of the jurisdictions that we all work with is the railroad. And, and they were a little unaware as to how that was going to go forward, but hopeful that we were able to move forward in, in a better understanding manner in, in terms of policies and, and funds and plannings. They did stress to us that they will be reissuing the funds, but all of them need to be spent within this year and we reassured them that we would be able to do that. The next day, I attended a pre-meeting with the City of Morehead and Clay County staff in regards to Commissioner, Representative Keeler did drop a bill in the House that mirrored the bill in the Senate that Senator Kupac had dropped to include all of Morehead's ask for the flood mitigation dollars. We re, as, as noted by this board's action this morning, that full amount is a huge priority for all of us, so we did meet to discuss how we will go forward, continuing to advocate for that. Hopefully there's an amendment that could be added to that to include the total amount. More to come on that. That day, I also had a, the MetroCog full board. It was a, a shorter meeting in terms of what we typically handle. We did cover the North Dakota DOT meeting. We did talk about the MetroCog month-end budget summary and, and projects are, are in the queue coming up. Let's see. Thursday, I also attended the Lakes and Prairies Community Action Meeting. That was a very, very long meeting. We did have a good review of our executive director. I have, happy to report to this board that we just continue to be so grateful for the leadership that Lori is providing to CAP LP, not only at the statewide, but really at the, the nation there. She's, so we did approve her review. We did talk, let's see, I'm opening this really quick. Those VITA tax sites continue to be really beneficial and they're open now for folks to help with their tax returns and for whatever reason, my agenda is not opening for that specific meeting. So I'll try and see if that opens and then, and then go on from there. Friday, I attended with all of you, the exec, the director interviews for our social services director. And please, just a second. Yesterday, I attended, ah, repeat, we did have a long dialogue with staff. Commissioner, Commissioner Krabinoff and I did meet with Representative Keeler and Senator Kupac in regards to the hearing on our PRTF bill tomorrow. Really was getting them up to speed on kind of all the idiosyncrasies of what that is and making sure that we're being as clear as how that facility will operate for them to understand, to advocate for additional funds at the state level. We did have a meeting just with staff and Commissioner Krabinoff and, and Administrator Larson after that to go through the talking points for that presentation. More to come for that at our work session this afternoon. And then yesterday, I also had the Lakeland Mental Health Board meeting. We did decide to do it virtual because of the weather. Had really good reports in regards to the financials and now we are including revenue streams in their own, in their own sheets, so it's helpful for folks to see how they correlate. As I've said several times before, the margins for that organization really depend on openings and the staffing pattern and we're happy to report that there are, within 24 to 48-hour availability for folks to seek psychiatric therapy appointments. That is great in terms of access, but that is slightly troubling in terms of budgets only because that means that there's some gaps in the staffing pattern. There are some no-shows and as you recall, mental health challenges are so vast and making it to appointments is always at the forefront of that. So continuing to see how we can think critically and look at ways to address the no-show rate. We did have an update on the legislative session. There are some, some bills moving through the House and Senate in regards to billable rates. Certainly, the, that is something that Lakeland supports, but we'll continue to see how that can shake out. And that agenda is not opening, so Commissioner Krabinoff was there, so if I missed anything, he can fill in my gap. But I believe that concludes my report.
Thank you. I was going to start with Commissioner Krabinoff and we've got.
Well, I won't be that long. Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, all right. So going back to last Tuesday, I had the, in the afternoon, I had the Adult Mental Health Local, or the LAC, our monthly meeting. And our, we always have sort of a spotlight and we invited Michelle Thornall from Children's Services to come to our meeting, give highlights of, a little overview of what, what that piece is with children's mental health. And then in many cases, such as if we do ever, if we're able to get the PRTF, those, age of those children go from lower age up to age 21. So certainly that falls in the adult mental category. So again, our discussion always is mental health, a continuum of care. And where that starts is with young children leading through, through their teenage years into adulthood. And, you know, all these groups do their very best to support children in the best way they can so their brains develop and their, they grow into responsible adults and, and not fall into the negativity that comes with not having to provide treatment to these people to let them be responsible and with good behaviors. Also in that meeting, we talked, we had our individual agency reports. So again, kind of paralleling off the year leader's discussion, we talked quite a bit about Rule 79 and how our different agencies were working with that. That was pretty much the highlight. Other than that, proceeding forward with the annual report that will present to this board in May as Mental Health Month. Later that, right after that meeting, I had the Finance Committee for Lakes and Prairies. for Lakes and Prairie Community Action Partnership. And once again, we did a deep dive into the, kind of the transition from last year into this year, making sure everything was looking good in the books. Things were balancing and everybody understood what was each line meant. And so it was a good review of that. The next day, I had the board meeting for the Historical and Cultural Society. Main events there, we had a spotlight on our Executive Director, Maureen Johansson. And she talked about things that she had been involved with in her many years there. Her job entails about 45% fundraising, as many director jobs do, and then 45% administration oversight of the staff, and then about 10% in programs. Her work has been tremendous over there and that operation's grown over the years quite a bit. And she is looking at a, we just had the resignation of Mark Peel, our archivist, from the 1980s on. And now Maureen is kind of looking toward the end of her career also. So in that preparation for that, and we've hired a consultant to help us, not only in setting up a strategic plan for the future of the board and what type of person would be best suited for that position to come in as Executive Director, but also get, taking a look at wage studies so that the next director is, that person would come in and is being paid at an appropriate amount and we get a good pool of candidates. One last thing. So the Historical Society and Cultural Society, I should say, Agency, they get, have in-kind free rent at the MCPS. And with that, there's an obligation where the ship is, as well as our area down below. And we run our gift shop, other events at some, you know, later hours. Are we adequately staffed? Do we have the security? So we're beginning just to have a quick consultant come in, review our practices, the hours that we operate, what's best for the safety of our employees. And also, now into the bigger picture, when we have big events like Pangea, where we have 900 people and type thing, you know, what's the best way to handle those security issues, keeping our public safe? As Commissioner Mojo already mentioned, she talked about our CAP LP Board Meeting, Monthly Board Meeting. Yeah, she, I'm not gonna repeat what she talked about, but I just want to let the public know that we did hire a new Human Resources Director. And her name is Stephanie Thomas and she actually had started that day. And, oh, and then, much like a county audits, financial office, as part of the federal mandate of receiving funds from the federal government for the Community Action Partnership, they have, once every five years, they have a reviewer, federal reviewers come and review the whole, the whole program, whether it's dealing with Head Start, staffing requirements, financial requirements, and housing and homeless, all those areas. And they're there for a week and that'll be coming at the end of April. And then we're gonna report that, I'm sure we'll meet their criteria quite well. Maybe they'll have a few suggestions, but they do a great job. And then I was part of the interviews on Friday with all of you. Again, just to repeat, great candidates. I'm so impressed by the staff of this county and the commitment they have, not only to the, to their work, but to others and respect. So Quinn will be great, I think be very good for that position. And then, other than that, there's been sporadic meetings, Commissioner Mojo mentioned, in preparing for the hearing on Wednesday, which I'll testify at, for the bonding of the PRTF. That's my report.
Why don't we take a quick break till 9:40? And we'll pick up in the agenda with the presentation from Social Services. Reconvene, and next on the agenda is the Annual Department Update from Social Services, Child and Family Services, Behavioral Health and Adult Protection. And Rhonda is not here. Oh, okay, Quinn, you leading this off?
I'm taking it away, yes.
Okay.
I'm actually gonna say, good morning, we have all of us here, but I'm gonna kick it over to Amy to start it off.
Thank you. Well, we're gonna discuss the Clay County Social Services Department Overview. And today, we're gonna be presenting on the Child and Family Services Division, along with Behavioral Health and the Adult Protection Division. So within Social Services, we have nine divisions. Child intake and assessment, which is supervised by Quinn Jager. Ongoing child protection case management, supervised by myself, Amy Amundson. Children's behavior, or Children's Mental Health, Child Welfare and Child Protection Case Management, supervised by Michelle Thorndahl. Behavioral Health and Adult Protection, supervised by Kirsten Lepard. Licensing and Disability Services, supervised by Jessica Mickelson. Home and Community Based Services, supervised by Holly Warner. Financial Services, Adult Family and Healthcare Teams, supervised by Karen Severson and Michaela Woderek. Child Supports, Fraud and Collections, supervised by Sandy Thorne. And Office Support, which is supervised by Diane Cluck. We also have one full-time fiscal supervisor and four account techs assigned to our work and budgeted in the Social Services budget. In Child and Family Services, we have two intake staff, eight assessors, 14 case managers, five case aides, three supervisors, and currently, one intern. Oh, I am so sorry, I might have.
You're good. Okay, so talking about the services that we provide, we receive abuse and neglect reports from the community. We screen those reports and if those reports are screened in, we conduct investigations or assessments. Sometimes those assessments do result in out-of-home placement and so are safety planning. And if we can't safety plan, sometimes children are removed from their parents' care. Once the assessment investigation is done and there's a continued need for services, those cases are referred to our case management team and we continue to work with the family, developing a case plan, working towards the goals that the family has identified that they want to work on, along with what our workers have identified that they want to work on with them. Some of the other services that we provide are child welfare case management. So that's gonna fall under our voluntary placement agreements for children who need mental health services or to receive, or to go to residential treatment centers. One of the things that I do is I supervise Children's Mental Health Services. So we have contracted providers with Solutions, Access and Lakeland. And so we manage those services, Rule 79 case management. We also manage services with contracted providers, with the Village, Lutheran Social Services, Lakeland, Rainbow Bridge, et cetera. We have a lot of community partners. And without having those partnerships, I think it would be a lot, it'd be very difficult for us to do our jobs so, and to provide the services that are needed. One other thing that our unit does is we have two intake workers that are phenomenal and they provide mandated reporter training. They will go wherever, if we have a request, they'll go to it. They'll cater it to what the need is and they just do an excellent job with that. So that's something else we do.
I wanna break down some of the numbers from 2023 and compare them to 2022. So total intakes, and that would be your child protection intakes and those child welfare, kind of those service requests from the community. 2189 for 2023, that's down 126 reports from 2022. It's one of the first times that I'd say it's not COVID-related that we've seen a decrease in intakes. Not sure what to attribute that to. Typically, we see our reports go down in the summer just because school's out and schools are usually a good connection for kids to say what's going on in their. Our total child protection intakes, however, so maltreatment-related concerns, they did go up. So we had almost 1,800 in 2023, up about 261 from the previous year. Total cases opened remain relatively consistent, only down six from the year prior. So what we're seeing, still pretty horrific stuff we see on a day-to-day basis. And some things that are easily mitigated and some things that aren't. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, this is me too. To break down the type of reports that we're seeing, overwhelmingly, it's neglect. Overwhelmingly, the type of reports that we're seeing, as you can see, 61% are neglect-related. That can range anything from inadequate housing, inadequate shelter, inadequate supervision, to substance use and the impacts that come from parents that are using substances and having some neglectful impacts on their parenting as a result of that. Has been overwhelmingly the number-one allegation, number-one maltreatment concern, at least as long as I've been here. As you can see, physical abuse is our, is our, I guess, next highest. Fortunately, that number's a lot smaller, 15% in physical abuse. That can be a continuum, obviously. It can be just excessive discipline that goes a little bit too far and it can be very, very malicious things that happen to kids as well. I have a tie between what's called sexual abuse and threatened injury. Threatened injury is more so statuses and conditions that warrant us to look into further. If you've had a child removed in the past, that might be something that we would. You have a new child, we're gonna come take a look and see if you kind of corrected the things that had your other child that was removed from you. Have you corrected those things now? And then sex abuse speaks for itself. Unfortunately, we do see some of that in our community as well. Those warrant, it's called 24-hour investigations. So anything sex abuse, we get out there within 24 hours to assess and ensure the immediate safety of children. We have an allegation of mental injury. It's not much, but it's parents' actions or behaviors causing psychological distress to children. It's not just a parent getting mad at a child, it's a next, it's a next level. There needs to be an observable impact to the child's psychological capacity or emotional stability. So just kind of breaking down the types of child protection maltreatment reports we respond to.
So in 2023, we had 185 unduplicated children in out-of-home placement. So that could be kids that would go into foster care, voluntary placement agreements, runaways who might be picked up and put in the juvenile center for one night. So we had a total of 185 children. Net cost to the county was $2,881,000, which was up $416,000 from 2022. The primary location of children in placement remains in non-relative foster homes. So that would be foster homes licensed through the county or through private agencies such as Nexus Kindred or North Homes. The second highest placement of our children was the West Central Regional Juvenile Center, followed by relative foster homes. So when we're just talking about placements in juvenile center, often, in the juvenile center, oftentimes, it's older youth who we do not have foster homes for. We have a shortage of foster homes for teenagers. So if a teenager that maybe is in a sibling group gets placed, they might end up being placed in the juvenile center just because we don't have a home that's willing to take older youth. But we are seeing an increase in our number of placements with relatives, which is one of our performance measures. And we are able to get out there, meet with grandmas, grandpas, aunts, uncles, and place those kids right away with those relatives while working on a relative foster care license at the same time.
So there are state and federal measurements that we get reviewed on. One of them is the relative care, which Amy just alluded to. We'd been on a PIP for, I think, four years. I think we got a, so we've been on PIP for four years. But when we looked at our stats for 2023, we met that performance standard. You could see the numbers there, so we were really proud of that. I think some of the things that we did is we really reviewed our policy and worked on training our staff with the legal requirements of what is a relative and akin. And so that really helped, I think, looking at some of our numbers. So we're really proud of that. So hopefully, we won't have to be on a PIP this year. So monthly case, monthly face-to-face caseworker visits, that's where our case managers are out seeing kids that they're working with in their home face-to-face every month. We typically meet that requirement, we're at 97.8%. The timelines to initial contact, so that is referring to when a case is screened in and when a social worker goes out and makes that initial contact with the children. That performance standard is 90%. We were at 91.2. For the last six years, we've always met that requirement as well. So we do really, a really good job of getting out there. There's times where maybe we're unable to locate a family or things like that, but that's what, that's to be expected. The last one is maltreatment recurrence. And that is in regards to if a, if a family member gets a maltreatment determination and within another, within that same year, they get another maltreatment determination, that performance standard is at 9.1 and we were at 0%. So that's a good, we do a good job with that too.
And we wanted to do it a little bit differently this year, not just throw numbers and data at you alone, which is what I feel like we've done the last couple of years, I suppose. We want to talk about the preventative side of things. Not all child protection cases actually have out-of-home placements. It's very rare, actually, under 10% of the cases that we open actually have out-of-home placements. Also very rare that families go to court. We try our best to work voluntarily with parents. And we do that with good engagement, good rapport building with the families, kind of identify some common ground as to what are the things that we're worried about. So with that, we wanted to highlight some, we won't speak about all of these, but we wanted to highlight some of the prevention resources that we use prior to needing that out-of-home placement if we just are not successful in mitigating those risks and concerns. First one I would like to talk about is safety planning. That's done by our staff, that's done by the social workers. Safety planning can be as in-depth as it needs to be, given a family circumstance. I know when I first started, I said, what the heck is a safety plan? Can somebody tell me what that is? And there, it's very difficult to define because your family is different than your family is different than your family. So it's gonna be tailored to the specific family. What resources do they have? Where's grandma? Where's grandpa? Is their neighbor more involved? We tap those informal supports that exist in every family structure and bring them to the table. The more people that are aware of maltreatment concerns that are involved in children's lives, the more protected we can have those kids. So we use the informal supports and sometimes formal supports as well to create specific safety plans that can keep kids safe while keeping them in the home. So just wanted to briefly touch on that. Another preventative resource that I wanted to speak to is what's called our Parental Support Outreach Program. And we get some grant funds from the state. It's one of the only prevention services, at least from the DHS level, that focuses on prior to child protection involvement. It's really designed to prevent families from entering the child protection system. It's really neat, we contract that with the village. So if there's any animosity between the family and social services, there can be a neutral third party that facilitates that program as well. They will engage the family and offer support, connect them with resources. The neat thing about our Parental Support Outreach Program is that families that participate can have up to $300 worth of flex funds to assist in things with basic needs. So if a family's struggling with money for laundry or a past due fine on a license to get their light driver's license back, this might be the thing that removes that barrier and mitigates, mitigates a barrier to increase the safety of a child in the home. So as long as we can tie that, tie the use of those funds to basic needs or meeting basic needs, we're ideally improving the safety and wellbeing of the child in the home.
Some of the other prevention resources, we utilize our family group decision-making, which we receive a grant from the state of Minnesota for. This is a program that really touches, brings the whole family together and develops a plan, whether it be to work on reunification of getting the child home, keeping the child safe in the home, figuring out a transition plan for those older youth who are leaving foster care. We also make referrals to public health for our home visiting, for their home visiting programs, provide parent education, individual and therapy, individual therapy for parents and children, family skills and in-home therapy, which we contract through the Village and Lakeland, or, I'm sorry, the Village Family Service Center for parenting skills for families.
We also have been working through a grant, initially through the SAMSA grant, but for, maybe you've heard SIBS, it's collaborative intensive bridging services. We get contract with LSS to provide that service and that's really a really intense, intensive in-home therapy with three different phases. Most of the time, the children don't go to Phase Two, but the Phase Two is a 30-day stay at the juvenile. stay at the juvenile center where they're really working on their skills to master. And we've seen some success with that. But part of the struggle is LSS has had a difficult time maintaining their staff. So hoping that they can build that up and we can work towards that. The other thing is we did recently have our staff trained in the Family Resource Training, or Family Resource Center. We had a number, a couple of days training, right? And then maybe two other trainings on top of that to really, to just train our staff up in those Family Resource Centers. So that's something new that we did this year, too.
I want to speak to some of the challenges that we continue to face in child protection, as both Amy and Michelle have said. Really seeing a lack of providers for services specifically going into the home. Some of the agencies out there are really struggling to keep and maintain staff that want to do this very, very difficult work. When they have turnover, that impacts our ability to refer for these services and have successful interventions in families' lives, thereby making our job a lot harder for the social workers to kind of correct some of the actions that need to be corrected to keep kids safe. We continue to see a lack of resources for children that have significant mental health needs. It feels like whenever there's a spot that opens up, it's taken immediately and there's always teen children that need that service and it's just not readily available anywhere across the state. It's not, this is a statewide issue. Specifically, the PRTFs and the QRTP residential facilities. As Amy alluded to earlier as well, we, we do struggle in identifying foster homes that can take older children. I mean, we always need foster homes, unfortunately, but specifically the older children, thirteen and up. Very difficult to find foster homes that are willing to take teenagers and as a result, they end up at the, at the juvenile center. Juvenile Center does a great job in taking care of them, but it's not as home-like of a setting as we would prefer and are always looking for additional families to really step up to the call and take foster homes for teens specifically. Continue to see a lack of affordable housing. Seems like we got apartment buildings that go up all over the place in the Fargo-Moorehead area, not necessarily affordable housing. So homelessness continues to be a pretty significant barrier. We have a lot of homeless families that we serve every day. Along with that, lack of affordable childcare. It's probably no surprise to all of you that childcare continues to be a huge barrier for all of us as well as the families that we serve. There just doesn't seem to be as many daycare providers and when there are, it is extremely expensive. So just trying to mitigate and tackle some of those barriers for the families that we serve so that they can get the childcare they need to get other stuff done, have a job, go to appointments and things of that nature. With that, I'll kick it over to Kirsten to speak to the behavioral health.
Good morning. I don't have anyone to tag team with, so unfortunately, you guys just have to listen to me drone on here for the next however long. I'll try not to ramble on, but there's a lot that can be said about our unit, but I will try to be concise. So to start with the, the mental health division within our unit, I have four full-time staff that do civil commitments. And so what I mean when we talk about prepetition screenings and civil commitments, it's for individuals that due to their mental illness or their substance use pose a danger to themselves or someone else and need that court intervention to get treatment and to move on from there. So as you can see, over the last several years, our numbers have remained fairly stable. One, one item in twenty twenty-three that I wanted to make note of is that our Rule twenties have increased pretty dramatically over probably the last year and a half, two years, and Mr. Milton can attest to that as well. So the Rule twenties is when someone has committed a crime. So there's that legal piece. But then due to their mental illness, we need to screen them for civil commitment. So those numbers continue to increase. I do not see those numbers slowing down in the upcoming years. So that's just something to be aware of. For individuals that we have proceeded with civil commitment, again, those numbers have remained fairly stable over the last three, four years. One thing I noticed this year when I was pulling together the data is, so we had sixty-four that we actually worked with the court on a civil commitment in twenty twenty-three. But that doesn't consider the time that was invested to screen, to file, and then there were many that the court dismissed and I didn't realize how many there were until I started pulling those numbers. So that's a trend I will continue to watch in this year. So the bulk of what the mental health staff do in, in the unit are monitor the civil commitments. So when an individual is committed by the court, typically, they will go to a state-operated facility for a short period of time, sometimes a long period of time. And then, once they have met the level that they no longer need inpatient treatment, the staff work with our community providers to, to work with them in the community to ensure that they continue to have those mental health services. So they work very closely with Lakeland Solutions, CCRI, Nystrom and Associates, just to name a few. And just to note, these civil commitment numbers include both of those that are committed or committed as mentally ill, mentally ill and chemically dependent. And we also had just a few that were committed as chemically dependent in the last year as well. Staff also work with individuals that are in the Minnesota Sex Offender Program and that are committed as mentally ill and dangerous. I have two staff that also work with Level twos. And so Level two screenings are for individuals that have a mental illness that need to be placed in a nursing home or a nursing facility. So we want to ensure that while they are there, that they are receiving the mental health services that they need while they're there. And then I have one full-time staff, Lori, who does targeted case management. You may have heard of that as Rule seventy-nine case management. Her caseload is always full and she's always out on, even on days like today, out in, in this weather, meeting with her clients. So it's just some of the partnerships and committees that, that the mental health staff participate in, very active with the Becker Clay Otter Tail Wilken Adult Mental Health Initiative. There's a couple of different committees that they sit on, work very closely with Bree and the Reintegration Advanced Planning Project over at the jail. Work closely with the River Project when we have individuals that are placed in the jail. There's several different homeless and housing committees that we participate in. There's the Local Advisory Council, which Commissioner Krabnoff is also a part of. And then most recently, I have started attending the, and this is a mouthful, the Cass Clay Threat Assessment Threat Management Team, which is something new and it's, I've been to one meeting and it's, it's been interesting. So more to come on that as well. So shifting to our, our chemical health unit within the larger unit, there are four full-time staff and then we have a case aide. So Desera and Sheena provide comprehensive assessments. So those are chemical health assessments. And then Holly and Angie do the civil commitment piece. They work with our pregnant and using. Those two, along with Sheena, also participate in our drug court and our veterans court. And Sheena is starting to be involved in the development of the DWI court here in Clay County. So they are very busy doing, doing assessments and treatment coordination. And I know last year, we talked about, over the last year and a half, being able to bill for treatment coordination and that's something that we're still learning about. There wasn't a lot of direction from the state for counties in particular on how to do that. So that is something as a unit that we are working through. But all four of the staff have been providing treatment coordination and have been billing for that. You can see our, our assessment numbers have gone down from a couple of years ago, but that's for a different reason. We went from having actually four and a half assessors to having one and a half. A year and a half ago, the state of Minnesota changed things. So now they have to be licensed. So there are two staff, Desera and Sheena, that are licensed to provide those. And then also just the negative trend that we continue to see is no shows, where we schedule an assessment and for whatever reason, and there are many of them, individuals don't show up. So just working with those to either reschedule within our agency or making sure that they are receiving that assessment somewhere in the community through another provider. So just some of the partnerships that we have with our chemical health, again, working with Bree over at the jail. If you haven't worked with her or had any chance to be a part of anything that Bree does, she's fantastic. I can't say enough about her. Again, work on, we participate in Drug and Veterans Court and in the development of the DWI Court, participate in the Suicide and Substance Prevention Coalition, the Criminal Justice Advisory Committee. We work very closely with our detox and will continue to do so as they open up their new facility, which we're excited for as well. Participate in the Red River Recovery Initiative, which is a monthly meeting. And then staff also participate in the regional networking meeting, which I believe is quarterly, if I remember correctly. And then we'll shift into our adult protection. So my unit is divided up into three smaller units and under adult protection, we have full, two full-time staff, Tracy and Erin. Erin has been with us a little over a year. So the number of reports that we are receiving continue to go up and again, I don't see that slowing down at all. The number of assessments, we're able to do more in the intake phase. So a lot of them aren't opened up for an assessment at this point in time, but the number of reports that we receive continue to go up. And just some of the different partnerships we have, we have our multidisciplinary team, which is both Cath and Clay County. And then there's also the Coordinated Community Response Coalition. We attend the FM Hording Coalition and I have been on that coalition for several years and we're finally seeing some traction. So that's exciting. And working very closely with our partners across the river. And then very active with our regional group as well when we meet quarterly with our representative from the Department of Human Services, but then the staff from the region meet monthly as well. So just some of the challenges that we've been facing, and we talked about some of these last year, there's a continued shortage of state-operated beds. And so that, whether that's at the community behavioral health hospitals or Anoka, forensic services, our care facilities, there's just a shortage of those beds. You know, and, and you've all heard it, that as a result of that, we have individuals that are in our jails, in our jails that should not be in our jail and we are, we work very hard to get them out so they can start receiving the treatment that they need. There's also continued shortage of community providers. On paper, it looks like we have a lot of providers, which we do, but they have staff shortage. So the services necessarily aren't there when the individuals need them. The complexity of the population that we serve continues to be a challenge that we deal with. I've been doing this for a long time and years ago, I could say this person has this diagnosis. Well, now they have multiple diagnoses, which includes mental health, chemical health, physical health, like Quinn talked about. Housing continues to be an issue for our folks as well. And so that just the complexity is, it's, it's a challenge for us. With our substance use disorder, we've talked before about just the reform and, and direct access. The state had moved in the direction to give individuals more choice, which is great. But again, there wasn't a lot of direction from the state. So we're navigating that and I think we're doing okay. But it, it's taking time. Of the staff, both Desera and Sheena have spent a lot of time in developing a comprehensive assessment. There wasn't a uniform tool that the state rolled out. So they developed their own and they're tweaking that as they go and they will continue to do that as changes are made with ASAM. So there's just a lot of time that they put into doing that. We've also noticed that we serve individuals from many different backgrounds, cultural backgrounds. So there's language barriers. We've dealt with several situations where there's been issues with a person's citizenship. So that's definitely not something, when you think back and you're going through your college courses, that's not something they teach. So those are, those are things that we've had to learn as we go. And of course, being a bordering state, bordering city, there's always issues with that and barriers with that for the folks that we serve. We have to determine residency, whether it's for civil commitment or for substance use services and also for adult protection assessments when, when we have residents of Minnesota that, and we know that folks bounce back and forth. So just determining that residency so we can, so the individual can be served in their hometown, home state. But then to end on a good note, I know I just talked about a whole lot of barriers, but one of the positives is with our adult protection unit. The state of Minnesota is moving from a reactive to a proactive system, which will greatly benefit those that we work with. It's, we're going through some training now. I think they're going to roll out those changes probably the end of May. So for Tracy and I, who have been in this role for a little while, we have a little bit more to learn because the changes are greater. Erin, who's only been here for a little over a year, she came in as these changes were already kind of starting. So the, it's not as much of a shock to her. But that's a positive. We will be able to serve more people in a proactive system.
Some of the people, you said that they're short-staffed, that they're not, can't provide the services and stuff like that. Do we have a contract with those people that they have to provide the services or?
I think some of them we have contracts with, but I mean, it's a lot, I, and I don't know if you guys are running into the same thing. It's just all of our community providers, whether we're contracted with them or not, it may just be one of the, the community agencies that we work with.
Well, we're contracted with them. Don't, are they obligated to provide or?
Yeah, they, they do the best that they can to provide the service that we contract for. You know, they're usually pulling from over here and pulling from over here to fulfill their contract with us. What we're looking at is the extent, you know, the, the extent. We could refer for more, you know, when we, when we really need the service, at least in our, to parallel it for us, it's in out-of-home placements, child protection. We're court mandated to provide these services. We're getting those services. It's more the preventative side of things where we really like to be robust with these services and offer them to many, many more families, but due to staffing patterns and they're, they're not able to give us more.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gross, Commissioners, I think one of the things that, if you recall, and Rhonda has spoken in the past about some of the revenues over expenditures that she sees at the end of the year, it has addressed some of the, the, I guess, contracted dollar amount versus what's actually been able to be spent. And so when we contract them, we only, we pay for the, the service that we receive. And if we don't receive the services, then, then that contract, while it might not be fulfilled, we also then don't pay for it.
Okay. Any other questions for any of us?
Any questions? Any comments?
Mr. Chair, maybe if I could make a comment, you know, I, I would just want to say and join. One of the things that we can't account for sometimes is just the collaborative nature. The work that we do in the county attorney's office, a lot of times overlaps both with law enforcement and especially with social services and a lot of the work that we're constantly seeing and, and working with their office and the team. I mean, repeatedly throughout the day, I, I know my attorneys are working with. I mean, repeatedly throughout the day, I know my attorneys are working with all the different departments that we've just gone through and talked through, and so we just appreciate their work and all the effort they put in every day to work to keep people safe and work with my office, and so it's much appreciated.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to echo that also, a point about the collaborative nature. We are all on so many different committees, and just the snippet of committees in which you discussed today highlights how your departments and individual areas, you really are being proactive about figuring out what the best path forward for the people that we serve is. It's complicated, and there are very many intersections in terms of service providers and networks, and it's not easy. But we really do appreciate how many tables that you sit on to advocate for the service for the people that you see. So thank you.
You're going to have a challenging year. Every year has been. You still have a great team of leaders and great team of employees that can get this job done and get it done right, and we have no concerns. The process we just went through to pick a new director just confirmed to us that y'all work together. You are creative, energetic people, and I feel very good about where Social Services is going. And I want you to know this board supports you. Thank you. We'll pick back up in committee reports. Commissioner Campbell.
All right. I want to start off by, last Tuesday afternoon, we did have our joint meeting with the HRA, which I found very, it was just good to have that. I think that was our first one that we've had in a very long time. And, you know, just as we heard today, even through some of the issues that Social Services faces, you notice a lot of it has to do with housing and availability and those types of things. And the, you know, that's kind of why I think it's so important that we collaborate with them as opposed to everybody just doing their own thing, you know. So, and I'm not suggesting that that's what's going on, but I just, kind of like Frank says a lot of times in our economic development, we put money over here, we put money over here, we put money here, we put money there, and we just want to make sure the left end knows what the right hand is doing. So I think that was beneficial to have that meeting. Then Wednesday, we had our dispatch budget meeting. And we went over the 2024 year-to-date budget, and there were some actions that were taken and that were recommended to the full dispatch board, which you'll have to report on because I could not make that one. But there was a wage study done, and so there was a recommendation for a 3% increase to the communication operator wage based on that wage study. There was also a change in the 401K contribution on when that time starts and when they become eligible for that. So that was also, and then there was also a retention pay based on the wages that were budgeted versus what paid out and the extra work that all those dispatchers needed to do because of the shortages that they had. So there was extra demands on them. And I don't know how that, any of those turned out because I wasn't at that board.
It was an adventure.
Okay. So Commissioner, I'm going to have to report, but I do know that those were all recommended for approval out of the Budget Committee. And then on Thursday, I was at the Lakes Country Service Co-op meeting. Several things, we had a really good presentation, and they refer to it as a board orientation deep dive from Josh Nelson, who's the deputy director of education programs. And one of the things that this board, if you recall, the YES program was eliminated last year, and there was certainly some discussion about that. I think we had a few people that came before this board raising concerns, and I think a lot of the concerns even had to do with the teachers that were involved with the YES program. But Josh Nelson reported that he's been in touch with those teachers, and all are doing very well in new roles in education. So they were, you know, obviously, there's a need for educators too, and so all of them were able to find alternative sources of employment. Then yesterday, I attended the first of two eminent domain hearings that Clay County has directed in support of the lands that are needed for the diversion project. That hearing was supposed to be in-person here, but due to the weather, the judge had changed it to virtual. The meeting went very well, and when it was all said and done, the judge did order the possession of those necessary lands in that particular hearing to be granted to the county through the order. And of course, the next phase in that process then becomes the down payment of the money that we talked about here. And then, just not to get too far in the weeds, but then what happens is there, based on the rules of that, there are three commissioners who are appointed, and then they go out and determine the value of what is to be paid for that land. But certainly, those properties, I think the order says that we will take possession by April 1st, I believe is the date that we will take possession of that land. And so, and I believe the, and a lot of that is along that Reach 4. For those of you who aren't familiar, that's the tieback levy that follows Highway 75 that goes down to the Wilken County line. You know, so a lot of that has to deal with that footprint of the construction that's needed. And that part of the project is a Corps of Engineers project. We're still, the county and the Diversion Authority was still responsible for obtaining all the land rights to that. And so now that's done, they can go forward. I think they're planning to do the bid letting on Reach 4 in April. And so at least that can move on the timeline that is, we need to try to follow. So as we speak today, there are two more eminent domain hearings that are on the Wilken County property that is along our border. I think it has to do with our county highway, but it's, and those are being handled, and the city of Morehead, through their legal authority is handling those eminent domain cases. And then tomorrow afternoon, we will be back in Clay County Court with the remainder of the Clay County properties. I don't know why it was split into two different hearings, but, so there is one more tomorrow. But I think it was, you know, it was certainly good news in terms of the project and being able to stay on schedule with the project by having that order put in place. And then, and then I did want to say that I also, as we all did, were with the interviews, and it's been mentioned a number of times that all four of them were very good candidates. And I think from the leadership standpoint in Social Services, they're going to be set for quite some time in that regard, so. And I had hoped to make the groundbreaking for the underpass on Saturday, but I had a sick puppy, and I couldn't make it. So, but I did notice that both Dave and Paul were there, so I'm sure we'll probably hear a little. Oh, okay. Well, you just didn't make all the photos, Frank.
Oh, I did.
Okay.
I didn't dig a shovel.
All right. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross.
Last Tuesday after our meeting, we had the PIC personal issues committee meeting. First item we discussed was the attorney, which we took care of this morning. Second thing we were discussing was the landfill manager out of the solid waste or the landfill thing. How to fill that, he's looking to fill that with a technician and not a manager. So that'll be coming forth probably out of next week or the week after that he decides on that.
Yeah, I believe that he plans to bring it to SWAC for discussion on Thursday and then potentially next week.
Then we also went over the personal policy update to, we had discussed this before about the pregnancy leave, as far as leave requests, that the pregnancy and parental leave can be added onto that. So that'll be coming forward too, to get approved yet. After that, we had the, all the HRA meeting, which had already been discussed, and I think it was a very informative meeting too, that learned a little bit more about HRA and stuff like that, where they get their funding and what it's all about. Friday, we had the interviews, which we discussed again. I do want to reiterate that, yeah, we got some good staff here, you know. It's tough to pick some, say, okay, you get the next chance at director job, but they're all directors to me. I mean, they all got a big job that they got to do in their own department. Saturday, at the 11th Street Underpass meeting, it was interesting to see, I mean, it's going to be a big project, when you look at $171 million projected for two blocks there. Makes you wonder sometimes, all that money being spent, but I mean, it's going to be a great project, and I'm glad we got it through there, that we got all that funding from the federal and from the state. I mean, that really was great, but it's a lot of money, and it's going to be a good improvement for Morehead. And I was surprised at the turnout, there must have been 150, 200 people there. It was really a good turnout and put on a good program. Glad to see the governor there and Amy Tlobushar and Commissioner of Transportation and Revenue. It's a good representation there, so. And those were my meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Last week, I also attended the PIC meeting on Wednesday, which has been covered well by Commissioner Gross and the HRA work session we had, which was informative. And that's, I'm glad we're going to do follow-through with that. I saw Steve's already got us scheduled for the next one, so it's good to keep the lines of communication open there, and Commissioner Krabbenoff is on the board as a liaison, and that's going to really help increase the communication between our two entities. Thursday, I attended the Greater Fargo-Morehead EDC Board of Directors meeting. We voted Terry Zimmerman of Packet Digital in on the, an open position on the board, and an opening on the Executive Committee was filled by President Rim Hall at MSCTC. So we have, we have a Minnesotan on the executive board there at this point, one other than myself. The ongoing conversation about board composition will be addressed, or at least they're going to meet about it this coming Friday, and we should have some idea of any changes that come out of that shortly thereafter. Had general business for the remainder of the meeting. Later that day, I attended the Red River Regional Dispatch Center Board of Authority meeting. Look here for my notes. We went ahead and did an update on the facility development with SEH Architecture. And right now, we should have a final drawing and a request of bids coming from them April 11th in our meeting. So we should start making some progress at that point. We, on the, we went ahead and confirmed the salary level and everything for our new director. And then the committee reports, as Commissioner Campbell indicated, there are several items on there. They looked at salary survey that's been conducted. They approved the salary compensation of 3% for telecommunicators. The other positions within the Triple RDC look to be in, well within the confines of what the salary survey showed, but they were a little behind on telecommunications. The bonus pay, incentive pay or retention, that is, this would be a third year for it. And we had a discussion, the employees there get $100 a month at the end of the year for every, if they're full-time employees, or it's prorated down if they're part-time employees. And we decided this was something that was done for COVID and the extra stress that it was putting on the staff there. And we're going to let them down gently, and we approved it for one more year. There's still some retention issues. In the last two years, it's really shown, this was part of the response where we've had a phenomenal retention rate as compared to national or statewide, people were staying. But we did discuss with our new executive director, we asked her to formulate, working with the Executive Committee, formulate a method where employees, as part of their evaluation, be identified for any bonuses that they may have earned. We want it to be for specific actions and conduct and performance as opposed to a blanket thing. This is last year, we're going to approve that. So we followed the Finance Committee recommendations on all of these issues. We did put that caveat on the incentive pay. Later that day, I attended the Lake Ag City Regional Library Board. We had regular business that we discussed. We did swear in John Broden, a new member of the board. We had our audit report presented by Brady Martson Associates. The audit was good, there were no problems there. And Rob Remark of JLG Architecture gave a presentation on the community center and public library. It was pretty lengthy, took up most of the rest of the meeting, but we did get regular business, financial reports and directors' reports done, and nothing dramatic to discuss there. On Friday, the 22nd, I also participated in the interview selection for Social Service Director. It really is just, I'd be redundant, but it really stands out what a quality level we have in supervision within that department, and I think we're going to do good with Quinn. We would have done well with any of them, but Quinn stood out. Saturday, I attended the groundbreaking for the 11th Street Underpass. This has been, since I got here, I was amazed at how thoroughly the city was split in two and how many times it caused us to hold our breath. The 22nd Street Underpass came around a couple of years ago. This is long overdue, and it's going to benefit us a lot, so it's good to have that done. And that completes my report. Steve, what do you got for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, I participated in the PIC meeting that's been covered. I would just make one point of clarification, that parental and pregnancy leave is a change in federal law, and so Darren is looking to make that adjustment within our personal policy. That afternoon, participated in the work session that's been covered. Again, appreciate your guys', this commission's willingness to meet with their commission. We're looking to meet again August 13th as our tentative date. That afternoon, I spoke with Dan Molly, as I mentioned earlier, in regards to flood mitigation funding and a series of other issues. On the 20th, I met with, or spoke with representatives from ACH, our Juvenile Center and Correctional Facilities medical provider, James O'Donnell, the superintendent at the Juvenile Center, had been working with ACH and some clarifications of some policy, and so that, we got that all. and some clarifications of some policy, and so that, we got that all taken care of. Met with Matt Jacobson on the 20th and following up from some of the agenda items from the planning commission. On the 20th, I met with Commissioner Ebiger in, in regards to our afternoon work session today. Also met with Jill Murray in regard to some things happening within the recorder's office. Participated on the, on the 21st, the meeting with the county and, and Representative Keeler's office in regards to, to flood mitigation. 21st, participated in the MCC JPA pre-meeting. We heard our project updates, some potential acquisitions and approvals that'll be on the agenda for Thursday, and also farm leases. Participated Friday on the social service director interviews. That afternoon, I did have a, a phone conversation with Red River Communications. Again, as I mentioned, the DDE program has come up with another additional $50 million in border-to-border grants. The Red River Communications has, has asked to have a, a meeting again with Commissioner, Commissioner Mojo and Commissioner Gross in regards to a potential collaboration and letter of support and, and funding would potentially go with that. Saturday, I participated in the 11th Street Underpass groundbreaking. Again, it was a, a great, a great day to, to see all those that were there. It was, in addition to Senator Klobuchar attending here, she also went then up to Hellstead to talk about our water district, and so that was a, a good day. Yesterday, participated with Representative Keeler for the testimony discussion on Wednesday. That's been addressed. Also spoke with Karen Lauer on some economic development opportunities that may be coming forward here in, in the coming months. I did send out an email last week, but just of note, we did, Flattery and Hood did submit the West Central Regional Water District to the Clay County Courts this past week. We do have the ability, for those interested, to follow the case numbers, CV-24-1052. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Brian, do you have anything for us?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Sorry, I neglected to report that I did attend the planning commission meeting last Tuesday after I also attended the HRA meeting with all of you. There were two items of note. There was an interim use request, a mining permit that was granted in Flowing Township. And then there was a determination of need for an environmental impact statement. There was a green gravel pit expansion in Hagan Township, and the board did unanimously request that that seeks an, an EIS process, so that concludes my report.
Commissioner Campbell.
I, I just want to follow up to my report on that eminent domain hearing. I, you know, I think it's important to note of the ones that we did yesterday, there was, there was a, a completion of an agreement that I think took like 13 of them out of the final, final hearing. So, you know, I, I think it's important to show that, that eminent, eminent domain is our, certainly our last choice, and I think that was made clear to the judge, that it's also our last choice that we want, want to have to deal with. Ultimately, there's some folks who just, you know, don't believe that their compensation is right, or maybe they don't believe in a project, and so they're following through with their rights to, to do what they did. But there was, there was a significant, significant number of those in the one for yesterday that had settled prior, at the very last minute before that hearing. So it was down to, I think there were three different landowners, there might have been more parcels, but there were three different landowners that were ultimately part of that taking that the judge ordered, so. Thank you.
Right. Sarah, anything for us?
No.
Okay. I'll call, oh, Commissioner Krabbenoff.
So, I do have a question for you. So just looking ahead into next week, or maybe the, maybe part of this week, that transfer of money then, the 8 million?
Yeah.
What are the dates on that?
Well, okay, so, so the order that happened yesterday, that, I believe that is approximately $1.5 million. And so what we've been able to work out is, and I think I reported this in my last deal, where the city of Fargo is the fiscal host, Clay County has already received the funds in, in our possession, so we don't have to advance any of our own funds. I think the order, I think the order states, and they basically break it down, there has to be three separate interest-bearing accounts established, and it's, and it's by individual. So there will be three, through the order, there will be three deposits made, and I believe that they have to be made prior to the possession on April 1st. So I believe those actions are going to happen yet this week. That coordination is done with the city and Lori and those people, the lands team, so. And then, and then in terms of the ones that are going, the ones that are going to be in tomorrow, is if that one is, if that one is granted, I'm assuming there will be a few more days, you know, involved with that. I'm not sure what the, if the judge would order, when the, when that would be, but, but the deposits have to be made as part of that court order, and that court order dictates as to the date.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we're adjourned.